Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County Board of Commissioners, August the 5th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask the Reverend Keith Die if he'd come forward and lead us in an invocation. Welcome this morning, Reverend Die.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here. I want to be asked to be...
Dare County, North Air Administrative Association, thank you so much for this privilege. Let us pray. Holy God, whose giving knows no limits and whose might exceeds every power in this world, we come before you as your thankful people and as your beloved creation, ever in need of your mercy. On this day, we ask that you watch over those in the path of Hurricane Debbie as it has made its way, its landfall, and is making its way across the southeast. Keep us smart, keep us safe in the midst of this and other storms that we might face. We thank you, Lord, for this Board of Commissioners and the work they do for our communities. Continue to instill in them a spirit of wisdom and cooperation for the good of all who call the Outer Banks home and all who journey here for relaxation and renewal. We are grateful for the remarkable county employees who serve among us. We thank you for the gifts of law enforcement, first responders, hospital employees, educators, and the many who offer themselves and their time to protect, serve, inspire, assist, and show hospitality. And our prayers go with all who will participate in this meeting today. Special thanks to our friends at Dare County Special Olympics and the other groups who are here assembled. Now may your peace rest upon each one of us. May goodwill inform our words and our actions that the things we do may be a reflection of the love we have received in order to become the love that we are called to share. All of these things, together with the special concerns of our hearts, we ask in the name of the One in whom all things are possible. Bless us to be a blessing now and through all our days. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Die. May we stand for the pledge.
Pledge of Pledge and To The Life, On The Day Of 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 The Day
Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time to set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, raise your hand and I'll recognize you when I do. Please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light on the podium that will come on when your time begins. There's a yellow light up there that'll come on when you have about a minute left. And when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. If you're here to speak about the next thing on the agenda, the zoning text amendment, there's a public hearing for that, please wait until we get there to have your comments on that issue. With that said, we have two signups. The first is Brian Harris.
Welcome this morning, Mr. Harris.
How are you guys doing? Good morning. Brian Harris.
Buxton.
Yep.
I guess we've gotten to know all you guys pretty well, so, you know, I'm here to just, guys, thank you guys again for all the continued strides that we're making down in Buxton. It is definitely going in the right direction. I think we all agree on that. We're looking forward to September 3rd, having Sturgeon down here with his Tiger team. Hopefully Sarah Keisler will be joining him this time. You know, she's now in charge after Carl Doctor has stepped down and moved to Germany. Ms. Keisler did reach out to me about a week ago, and she said there will be a contract awarded for the RAB on August 30th. So I think ahead of that meeting, I think at that meeting, we'll begin to really address the RAB board finally and really start setting that up. You know, we really don't, I really don't have much to say this time, believe it or not. I usually have a whole lot to say. I just, you know, it's going in the right direction. We're having a meeting, our monthly meeting will be next Monday down in Buxton, the BCA. We have Liz Rashid from SCLC will be speaking. Halleck will be doing another presentation. I don't know what we would have to do to get you guys down there. I know it's a very short notice, but I think it'd be wise for us to even maybe get this recorded on that current TV if it's a possibility. I know it's a week away, it's a lot to think about.
What's the date again, Brian?
It's Monday, August 12th, a week from today, it's 7:00. It's scheduled to be at the Buxton Fire Department, but I did talk to Susan Gray. We could move this over to the Pheasant Center if we needed to. It is available that night, so. And that's really all I got. Just thank you for everything. I did Salvo Joe, I will bring that name up just for a second. I am in all those emails like you guys, I'm sure you see my email address, Sushi Brian. He has brought a great deal of information through this to the table. Those laser fish, all that NCDQ, that website, there's a lot of information there. And after you read through some of it, it's, personally, it doesn't look as bad as we thought this thing was five months ago. You know, there has been tremendous amount of testing, there's been a tremendous amount of ports, there's a whole lot of information in all of that. The BCA is not, we do not share, Mr. what's his name, Salvo Joe, we do not share the same course of action to resolve this. We do not, you know, I don't think a lawsuit or anything like that is even in question. I mean, ultimately, we have to work with the agencies that, you know, he's screaming all the oversight and everything else about. So I did just want to bring that up. I do appreciate that everything that he's brought to the table and all the information he continues to share, but it's just, we don't want to go that route at all. It's only going to hinder Buxton in the future, it's only going to hurt us in the long run. So, thank you guys for all your time, and hopefully you can make it out next Monday.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next is Lee Goldman.
Welcome this morning, Mr. Goldman.
Good morning, gentlemen and ladies. Wasn't sure what shirt I was going to wear this morning because I do wear several of them. Today, I'm actually just looking for support. Two years ago, I started the 9/11 memorial walk for the Outer Banks. We started with actually myself, who was feeling good after two knee surgeries and thought I can walk a 5K and do it for a cause. Turned around behind me and I had 34 other people with me. Last year was our second year, and several of you had come and attended, we had over 100 people. This year, my goal is to have over 200 people. The community of Dare County has reached out to help out with food, drink, through several different establishments, and in coordination with law enforcement, EMS, and fire, I'm hoping to make this a larger event. Obviously, it is on September 11th, and we will be meeting at the new EMS Station 1, Killdova Hills Station 14, anywhere from 8:00 to 8:30. We will commence the walk at 8:46. 8:46 is of importance because that is when the first tower was struck, and life as we knew it changed. Unfortunately, we do forget things as a society. And with today's youth or whatnot not realizing what is history and what is fact, I don't want to see this ever forget. Unfortunately, Facebook has become nothing more than me finding out somebody I know has just died again from 9/11-related diseases. And as of this date, more have died from 9/11-related diseases than died on 9/11. I am not a fund, I am not an organization of anything, I am just me. And started this so we do not forget. It's no political affiliation, there is a prayer and a walk, and we just remember. What I thought one of the coolest things though last year, you guys would remember, is all the people honking the horn when they saw all the firemen in turnout gear and all the American flags. At that point in time, they remembered. And I don't ever want to find out that we ever forget. So, besides this looking cool in front of me like I had a lot to say, I actually just brought a bunch of flyers, and I still got a lot of time left, so if anybody wants to ask me any questions, you're more than welcome to.
What's the route of the walk, Lee?
The route of the walk is going to be from behind the new facility, all the way around to the top of the monument, and then back. Originally, I didn't really think about how far it was until I realized that it actually qualified for a 5K. And what was nice was Dare County has recognized that as a wellness point, hint, nudge, nudge, come on down, get a point. Just saying. So, we also will have refreshments and cooling fans at the top of the monument because it is September and you don't know what you're going to get. So in coordination with Station 14, Killdova Hills, EMS, and the Collington Fire Department, we will have stuff up top with different rehab units to take care of us. And if you can't make the whole walk, we will have a van to bring you back. Doesn't mean you can't have any of the donuts or the granola, that'll be there afterwards. You're more than entitled to it.
You just answered my question, Lee, is there a van to take me back? Okay.
We got you, we got you. And it's low to the ground too, so you don't have to step up into it, we don't need the bar.
It's better and better.
It's okay, man. We, pretty much after several years, have tried to cover all the bases. Even though I am affiliated with lots and lots of things, as you all know, this is me. So if I do or say something that maybe isn't appropriate, do not attach it to any of the organizations that I am affiliated with. Feel free to come to me personally. My views and opinions may not be those of several others, which some of you already know that. With that, I just hope to see the people of Dare County, it is not just you or the people that are in the room, this is for anybody to come down. It is respectfully done, and it is for nothing more than to remember all the lives that were lost. Thank you.
Sounds like a good thing, Lee, just you might consider for the sake of convenience, reach out to some of the guys down in Hatters, Chief Midget there at Buxton, Chief Valance in Hatters, and they do a very powerful lighthouse climb, tower climb.
Understood.
And I think they'd love to know what you're, if we can get, for coordination's sake. Thank you for all you're doing, though.
I have sent emails and reached out to also Chief Ferrinello over in Frisco and several others. I've sent stuff to Hatteras Island Rescue Squad. I have reached out, and I do realize that the Hatteras Lighthouse is a little incapacitated at the moment. I originally was going to just do that walk, and then when it wasn't available, I found the next highest place. So, that was kind of that. They are all invited, it is sent out, there was actually a North Carolina Fire Department paper that this will be in, and several others. I've reached out to several of the media outlets, and hopefully they pick up on it. And this becomes a bigger walk, and just gets bigger each year. And the end goal is to never forget.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee, appreciate it.
That's all that I have, sign up. Anyone else like to speak at public comment?
Sure.
Good morning. Mary Ellen Valance, Dare County Board of Ed. David was unable to come last minute, he was, wanted to stand up and speak for the Board of Ed to say, you know, we started a recruitment and retention committee not too far back to start looking at options and ways that we could reach out and support our staff. And through that, have come up with some really great ideas, but David just really wanted to thank you guys for the supplement that you guys have given to our teachers. We have, incredibly grateful for the, all that you guys do for our schools, and the relationship that we have with the board and the commissioners is just, it's just beyond words. That, I know there's a lot of counties from going to different events with the boards, that not every county in North Carolina has the relationship that this board and the Board of Ed have. And it's, it is very special, and it's very appreciated, and so thank you so much for your support with our staff, with the supplement, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, any public comment from Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
And with that, Mr. Chairman, we move on to item five. This is a public hearing on a text amendment to section 22-27.14 for the Harbor Road Marine Commercial. Ricky Scarborough submitted a text amendment application requesting to amend the MCT, MC2 zoning ordinance, this requested language to increase the height for boat building facilities. He wants the height increased to 52 feet. I think the current height is around 40 feet, there's a staff memo in there. I apologize, but Noah couldn't be here this morning, but nonetheless, you have the memo in there. We'll conduct the public hearing, and then following the public hearing, it'll be back to you all for questions or for action if you choose to move forward.
Can't imagine, I've got one question.
Sure.
Looking back through the minutes of our past meeting and the being prior to that, I don't see where this came up for us to conduct a public hearing.
It may not have. There's no requirement that you all have a motion to conduct a public hearing. The requirement is you have to have a public hearing before you
Okay.
do a text amendment. We generally bring it to you, I don't know why it didn't come to you, but...
Yeah, because this, in looking at this as a text amendment, I would like to at least the public know we're having one.
Well, it was advertised the way we normally advertise public hearings.
Okay, well, since this has to do with launches, and we've had issues with that.
Sure.
And we actually made concessions at our last time, that we would put notices at the community center, we put notices on the property that's being text amended. Has all that been done?
I don't know the answer to that. So would you like to?
I would like to table this till the next meeting.
And then make sure we've come, done those things, and then we'll have the public hearing at the next meeting.
Yeah, is this time sensitive?
I don't, is Mr. Scarborough here? No, sir.
Is this time, it's not? Yeah, and I agree with Commissioner House, we, rather than us getting in another situation like we were concerning housing, we need to reach out and go the extra mile.
Okay. We'll take that. And yet Noah couldn't be here, he had a death in his family, and so he was not able to be here this morning, so.
Okay. So Commissioner House, you want to make a motion to table?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to table this text amendment until our next meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, motion on the floor by Commissioner House to table to the September meeting, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none of those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Item six on the agenda is a presentation for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financing Reporting, and I'll turn that back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. This should not surprise anyone. Recognition of our Finance Department, our Director and Assistant Director in the Finance Department themselves, once again, since the 33rd consecutive year that our Finance Department has major accomplishments, that's been, that they've achieved to receive the Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financing Reporting, 33 consecutive years. I'm going to ask our Finance Director and our Assistant Sally DeFosse to join me in just a minute down front, but before I do that, this is, this achievement is incredible. It's the highest form of recognition that the Government Accounting and Finance Offices award. We recent, they were recently awarded this honor by the Finance Office Association for the County's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for Fiscal Year ending 2023. The Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financing Reporting Program was established in 1945 by the Government Finance Association to encourage state and local governments to go above and beyond the minimum requirements of accounting principles by preparing the annual comprehensive financial report that provides full transparency to the members of the community that our government serves. The purpose of the program isn't to evaluate the financial status of state and local governments, rather it aims to empower members of the community to perform this assessment themselves utilizing all the financial data that's presented in the report. To create this report, complex financial information must be condensed into a single comprehensive document. The annual comprehensive financial report and this information must be acceptable and understandable for all citizens regardless of how familiar they may be with complex financial details or with navigating financial information. Creating a report that fills all the criteria this prestigious award requires is incredible, it's time-consuming, it's challenging, and it makes it a massive achievement for local governments to attain. So for the fact that Dare County has received this certification of achievement of excellence consistently for 33 consecutive years speaks volumes about the exceptional talent that we have within our entire Finance Department, particularly these two individuals, Dave Clausen and Sally DeFosse. They've been instrumental in developing this annual report, which has been recognized with this prestigious award for decades. Every single year since Mr. Clausen has been our County Finance Officer, this award has been awarded. Dave's outstanding leadership along with the remarkable team he has built within our Finance Department deserves special recognition. And of course, Sally is also a key player in our Finance Department's success. Her many responsibilities include developing Dare County's annual budget and producing the annual comprehensive financial report, and she plays an integral role in the county receiving this honor. Which I, as I previously mentioned, it's the highest form of recognition for Government Accounting and Financial Reporting. In addition to Dave and Sally, I'd be remiss if I didn't also recognize Dare County Finance Department as a whole, because I know that this accomplishment is a team effort, so many dedicated Dare County employees in the Finance Department have made significant contributions in their work every day, ultimately resulting in the county receiving this award again in 2024. So Dave and Sally, will y'all meet me down front for a presentation?
Yes, Sally, now.
I've had the pleasure of presenting this as chairman for the last 10 years to you, Dave. And what is this, Dorothy, how many of these do we have hanging on the wall back here?
Well, they're in the lobby.
In the lobby.
And there are, I think, three different plaques.
Yeah.
Two.
Yeah. And then this is, this is another plaque, we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 13 more spots on here, Dave.[1231.11][1231.11](laughing) So, it's Government Finance Association Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financing Reporting is presented to Dare County, North Carolina. This thing weighs a ton, I say that every year, this thing weighs a ton, but we've got 13 more spots, brother, so fill it up. Thank you.[1252.42][1252.42](applause) And Sally, this is the award for Financial Reporting Achievement, Assistant Finance Director, Dare County, North Carolina. Thank you for all you do. Just a little bit lighter.[1267.58][1267.58](laughing) (applause) Thank y'all for what you do.
Mr. Chairman, it's an achievement to do something like that three years in a row. 33 is off the charts, so Dave, Sally, the department, I know all of us echo that.
Can I mention?
Yes, sir, that brings us to item seven on the agenda. Sandy Pace is here for a presentation on behalf of the Dare County Special Olympics.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, Sandy, good morning.
Good morning, good morning.
Here are the athletes.
Glad to be here, thank you. We're going to have all of the athletes and coaches that attended the 2024 Summer Games up here with us. Not all the athletes are able to be here, nor the coaches, but most of them. We took 27 athletes to state summer games that happened the first weekend in June, it happens the first weekend in June every year. They start training and practicing weekly starting in January. So we take swimming, athletics, which is track and field, bowling, and basketball to the state summer games. We also have other activities happening throughout the year, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. But these guys work hard, and gals work hard every week, they have to attend practices weekly, and they have to be committed. There's certain criteria that they need in order to be able to make it and be somebody that can attend the state games. It's always a lot of fun, they have a great time, it's a great event. The coaches, I want to honor them today as well, they give of their time freely and volunteer, nobody is paid. And so, they're giving of their time, not just weekly at the practices, but they're also giving, you know, creating what they're going to do in their practices, and keeping up with paperwork, and whose form is filled out correctly, and who has it in on time, and I'm driving them all crazy with, I need this, I need that, make sure your coach certification is up to date. So I want to honor them today with a special gift, they're each going to get one, we're not, in the essence of saving time, we're not going to pass this out to them, but the coaches are all going to get a mug today that has our Dare County shield on it with their coach and their name, and then on the back, it says difference maker, because they make a difference in the lives of these individuals.[1433.01][1433.01](applause) Without them, these individuals would not get the opportunity to compete at the highest level, at the state level, and some of them go on to the national level if they're selected. Every four years, there's a national Special Olympics. We did have an athlete go a couple years ago to the National Games in Orlando, we've had several over the years do that. Also, I would like Kathleen to tell a little bit about our two swimmers that are state champions, and so one of them is not here today, but the other one is, so if you'd come up, Kathleen, and just let them know, I don't know exactly what their, what their event was that they won in, but you'll notice all of these guys are wearing their bling. They came back with some bling.
Yeah, because you're one of our state champs.
Hello.
This is Jake Slagle. If you notice, look at these.
Wow.
These at state, he is one of our state champions.
Great job, Jake.[1496.11][1496.11](applause)
Jake was the fastest person in the state in the 100, 200 IM
Wow.
individual medley, and if you've been watching the Olympics, that is a very hard race.
Wow.
And he was the fastest person in North Carolina.
Wow.
Wow, yeah.[1523.21][1523.21](applause)
My friends were, were the, my friends were all like me when we were at high school.
Yeah, Jake crushed it. This is Andrew Benani. Show them your gold. He got this in the 50 backstroke.
Wow.
He was the fastest in his age in the 50 backstroke. It is new. Andrew did great. Zach Nelson is not here today. I think he couldn't get off work, is that what it was? He went out of town. Oh, he went out of town. He is the 200 breaststroke champion for the state of North Carolina.[1573.83][1573.83](applause) And the 100. So, I mean, Dare County, they, their names are at the top of the list for the state, so I can't thank them enough. This is why we do it. We don't need to be paid for this. This is our payment.
Amen.
Thank you.[1595.21][1595.21](applause)
And these coaches get a lovely award in June, they get to go and stay at the NC State dorms for the weekend and enjoy it. So yes, it's always a fun time, but the athletes love it, so I just want to thank the coaches, and I want to thank the athletes. As you can see, they really put in the hard work and work extra hard to do it. I want to thank their parents and family members who brought them today, and the ones who helped make it possible for them to get to practices and do what they need to do. And I also, I want to end with thanking you guys, thanking the commissioners, I'm going to present you. Zeke wants to say something?
No, I forgot Zeke.
Oh. Zeke is a swimmer too.
Zeke. Hey, Zeke.[1637.51][1637.51](applause) This is Zeke Durin. Check this out. Zeke got two golds and a silver.
Wow.
Wow, Zeke. Do you want to tell them what you swam?
Uh, I swam 50-yard breaststroke, 50-yard freestyle, and 50-yard backstroke was the last swim I swam in.
Wow.[1659.83][1659.83](applause)
And he did great. We've got the fastest swimmers in the state.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other athlete want to say anything about your experience at the state games? Gina, you might have to stand down here, though, you're not going to reach this. All right, what do you want to tell them?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you, Gina.[1687.83][1687.83](applause) Any other question? Want to talk? You want to say something, David?
All right, come on up here.
Hello, my, my, my name is Dick Tatis, and I got a buddy, you know, and my mom, and you know, and you, and I, and you, to say, you know, people, what, I, I, my, I have a friend to say, hey, you know, you know, come, you know, people, and years ago, I know, like, like, Tom, years ago, hey, you know.
Thank you, David. Thank you.[1742.25][1742.25](applause)
They make it easy to want to be a part of their life. They're the most amazing people, watching them be able to become what they aren't given other opportunities to become is absolutely amazing, and it's just, if you want to have a good time, you need to spend time with these guys because they're the best people in the world, I'm telling you, they will make your heart smile every time and make every moment of every day worth it.
Sandy, Sandy, question. Where do they practice their talent?
Thankfully, in a lot of our facilities. We, bowlers do it at the bowling alley locally, we use the YMCA for swimming. We use the parks and recreation buildings for basketball, we also use the track and field at First Flight and also Manio. We are also, just so y'all know, we have started a tennis program, we didn't have that before about a year and a half ago, we're using First Flight Flight, I mean, Kill Devil Hills Parks and Rec to do that. We are starting a soccer program this fall for the first time. We'll be using the First Flight school fields to do that. We also have equestrian that happens in the summertime. We also have bocce that will be in the fall. We use Doughty Park and the Baum Center's bocce court. Cheerleading happens at the Tillot Community Center. So these guys are everywhere. You guys just need to come out and hang out with them and have a lot of fun. We do a lot of special events throughout the year as well. They love to dance. They love to dance. They like to eat. So yes, we do a lot of special events and dances and picnics and different things. And I also expect to see all of you all at next year's polar plunge. I'm giving you fair warning and enough notice. Plunge or pay, that's my thing. So Rob and Irvin have been gracious enough, and Mr. Wiley, who's not feeling well, he has always been a big supporter of ours, but I'm going to tell him this year, he's got plenty of time to get better before that plunge takes place. And Steve, thank you for your support with the Jeep Invasion. We could not do this without the community support. It probably takes about $55,000 to $65,000 a year to run this program. We have 127 athletes registered in Dare County. We also serve Currituck County athletes. We serve Camden County athletes and Elizabeth City athletes. And we have a few from Hatteras, but we're going to work on that, Jen, this year. We're going to get a few more from Hatteras to get up here and also go there to do some things as well. So we are grateful for the county support, and that's why we want to present the Board of Commissioners with this plaque that says, "Your support has made a difference in the lives of our athletes and enabled them to compete and succeed at the highest level. You are being honored with much appreciation and gratitude." And it's presented by Special Olympics Dare County with today's date. And we would like to get a picture with all of you guys, if that's possible. I just want to thank you for your support of this program and let you know what it means to these guys to be able to do it, because when you watch them, you'll, you'll want to keep on giving of your time, money, and whatever it takes to make it possible.
Well, let's come down front and take a picture.
All right, everybody go that way. Are we, you're going to stand there? Okay. Everybody stand up against the wall, back that way.
Okay. Rudy County Manager?
Yes, sir. Chairman, that brings us to item eight on the agenda. Sheila Davies is here for a Blue Zones Ignite presentation.
Good morning, Sheila.
Good morning.
There will be free samples of leafy green vegetables at the inclusion.
September 10th, which Amy's going to tell you all about. So I am very pleased to be here this morning. You all probably remember, it was last month at the Commissioners' meeting, Chairman Woodard shared some information about Blue Zones Ignite after attending one of the Friends sessions. And after that, I had reached out and said, we'd love just to show up and kind of do a quick overview today. And then I think you all are starting to get some emails as well about what's happening with this. But this is a really exciting initiative that we are thrilled to be partnering with Outer Banks Health to bring to Dare County, Blue Zones Ignite Outer Banks. So I am here with Amy Montgomery from Outer Banks Health. We also have Sue Woolard. She is one of our steering committee members. So I'm going to turn it over to Amy. We have just a really brief PowerPoint presentation to tell you about this really awesome initiative for Dare County.
Great. Thank you, Sheila. Welcome, Amy.
Good morning. I just feel so blessed to be here in person to witness the Special Olympians this morning. My heart is most certainly full. But thank you for allowing us to be here this morning and tell you a little bit about the Blue Zones. Just as Sheila said, Outer Banks Health and the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services are partnering with the Blue Zones and Blue Zones experts to have the, have Dare County become a certified Blue Zones community. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about what that looks like this morning. And so the Blue Zones, if you're not familiar with the Blue Zones already, the Blue Zones are five areas, five regions around the world, which have been researched and are known to have the longest living people in them. The research was done about 20 years ago by a researcher named Dan Buettner. And he partnered with National Geographics and other agencies and studied these cultures to find out what it is about these cultures and these places around the world where people live to be more than 100 years of age. They're listed for you here. Okinawa, Japan, Sardinia, Italy, Loma Linda, California, Ikaria, Greece, and Nacoya, Costa Rica. If you'd like to learn a little bit more detail about the Blue Zones and the research, you can go to bluezones.com, as well on Netflix, if you're looking for a new series to binge on Netflix. Live to 100: Secrets of the Blue Zones Documentary Series. It just won three Emmy Awards. So a really good something to watch on Netflix. But I like to ignite people's interest in the Blue Zones by sharing a story and just talking for a moment about some of the science. But a story that you can Google, Stamos Maratus. He is a gentleman who lived in the United States most of his life. He was an immigrant from Ikaria, Greece. And in his 60s, he was diagnosed with cancer and told by his oncologists and other physicians that he just had a few years to live, and there was really nothing they could do for him. So he decided to return back to his homeland in Greece to be amongst his people, his family, and he did so. And he started to adopt the lifestyle of his native family back in Greece, and he lived another 30 years. And that is a true story about this gentleman. Also, the science, the identical twin research that's proven time and time again, two identical twins who live different lifestyles, who live in different parts of the world or country, there's a significant difference in their ultimate well-being and longevity. And what they find through the research is longevity and well-being is tied to where one lives and the lifestyle that one lives in that place. I hope that interests some of you and some individuals watching this morning about the Blue Zones. So what are the things that these areas, these five regions in the world have in common? And they're in four main categories. These people move organically. They walk places. They just move their bodies. They garden. They do things, and they're very physically active. Also, they have the right outlook, a positive mindset. They have a purpose. In the morning when they wake up, they have a purpose, like, like all of you, right? Your purpose is to make Dare County a great place to live. These people wake up in the morning, and they know what that is. They're able to downshift at the end of the day. Also, they do eat wisely, Commissioner Ross. We don't have our veggies with us this morning, but people in the Blue Zones do eat wisely. And two things are important. They do have a plant-based diet. They're not strict vegetarians, but mainly their diets are plant-based. And they follow a rule that they stop eating when they're 80% full. And also, they have something they call Wine at Five. Here locally, we're calling it Friends at Five. They get together in the evening with friends and downshift and just enjoy a meal together. And then connection is really important in the Blue Zones. They put their loved ones first. They have a sense of belonging regardless of, you know, a specific religion. They all do have a faith and gather together in faith. And they also are very connected to one another with social support. So those are the things. Really not rocket science. And what we like to say when we're talking about the Blue Zones, and it's very true, I think that the Blue Zones has got, has garnered a lot of enthusiasm already in this community, because we're already a shade of blue, right, here in Dare County. You've seen so many examples just this morning of the way we are very socially connected in the Special Olympics, the way people are gathering around physical activity, you know, the 9/11 activity, the support we have for one another in this community, the comments Chairman Woodard, you made about children and youth partnership this morning. That's all about supporting one another in our community. So we're already well on our way to being a certified Blue Zones community. I do want to be clear, we won't be the sixth Blue Zone. That's really not the purpose. That research was 20 years ago. That's complete now. But we are going to be recognized for doing things that make the healthy choice the easy choice. And this is a marathon, not a sprint. So it's about a three- to five-year process, and we're in the first phase currently. And that's a community assessment. So we will have Blue Zones experts here in September. So Dan Buettner's son, Danny Buettner, will be here in Dare County and will be making a presentation to the community, along with five other national experts on longevity and well-being. And you can hear Danny Buettner speak on Tuesday, September 10th, at Jeanette's Pier. And if you'd like to attend, go ahead and sign up. We have a limit that evening of 250 people, and we already have 170 people registered for the event that evening. So use the QR code. Go to bluezones, bluezones.com/ignite-obx, and you can register right there on the website to attend the event. We are having other events that week. We will be doing windshield tours with the experts. We will be in Hatteras for a day. We'll be in just about every community. There will be an event in just about every community where we're having focus groups, a CEO roundtable. So they will be here for three days, and many of you have been or will be invited to participate. And so that's a little bit about the Blue Zones. And I do believe that Sheila wanted to talk a little bit about the app.
Yes. And before I mention the app, which is another exciting component of this, I think is thinking about what's going to be happening in September between the, the big event that Amy mentioned, but also the tours and that's part of the community assessment. It's really an opportunity to highlight, as Amy already indicated, some of the amazing ways Dare County is already a great shade of blue. And then at the culmination of that, they will be presenting information back to us with their recommendations of how do we keep advancing the great work that's happening in Dare County to make our community even better and stronger and more aligned with Blue Zone and ultimately become a certified Blue Zone community. One really neat thing that I'm really grateful to Amy and her leadership and working with the Blue Zones team, we're going to have an opportunity to unroll or to unveil and roll out the Blue Zones Challenge App to all Dare County employees as part of this initiative. This is going to happen in September. Chairman Outen, at our September Department Head meeting, I'll be going over with department heads how to do this. And then Dorothy, I'll be getting with you on, you know, the best way to get this information out for, for our team members. But we've been, been playing around with this app most recently. It's really neat. It's a way to guide you with information and tidbits and challenges that will help you change your diet, increase your activity, update your living spaces, and build your social life. And it's not, this isn't a diet. This is a embrace your, your lifestyle, make some lifestyle changes to ultimately have healthier, healthier, longer life. So we're really excited about this app. Like I said, we'll roll it out in September. The hospital is also, or Outer Banks Health is also rolling it out with all of their team members for the entire health system. So, you know, if you think about, if we can get collective buy-in from Dare County employees, close to 800, and then the hospital, Outer Banks Health, health staff, about 500, we, you know, well on our way to getting a large percent of folks really engaged and motivated. And we'll be back in September to encourage you all to use the app as well. So with that, that's our presentation, and are welcome for, yeah, questions.
You guys can have another big event fundraiser, Amy. Last spring, it was fantastic up at Duck Woods. It was marvelous.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. This is funded from the proceeds from last year's gala. And we did call it the Painting the Outer Banks Blue Gala in March. So we will have another gala in March of 2025, and those funds will continue this good work.
This big party is great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thanks, ladies. Great work. Great, great program.
Chairman, that brings us to item nine on the agenda. We have Kay White and Sue Kelly here for the Senior Tar Heel Legislature.
Good morning, Kay.
Good morning. It's good to be with you once again to report on our activities. And I want to thank you very much, Chairman Woodburn, and every, each of, every board member for your support for our program. Each of you have a packet there. The information is similar to what you've received in the past, because we're on a two-year plan for the priorities. I forgot my other glasses. Sorry about these funny little things I must wear. Unfortunately, since the North Carolina House and Senate during the, this past six months, were not able to come together and approve the budget, we got no additional funding for our five priorities. So they are, the normal funding is coming through, but we had asked for additional funding to serve more of our seniors' needs. So they're, they're there for you to review, but if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Just a second. Sorry. Anyway. So I chair the Legislation Committee for the Senior Tar Heel Legislature, and we're very busy now, because this is the time of year when we are planning for the priorities for the next two years, '25 and '26, in the general, in the General Assembly. And so I'd like to inform you of some of those, but we're still working on them. So we'll be deciding in October what those five priorities will be. The one that the Legislative Committee has come up with is the housing. For, for senior citizens, there's many, many, many issues involved in housing. And so we have to... And so we have to always keep that before the legislature to try to make it easier for the senior citizens to remain in their housing. So in June, I attended the meeting in Raleigh, and we had several speakers there. A big thank you goes out to the Coastland Times because they recently, actually it was just last week, in the senior living section of the Coastal, Coastal, Coastland Times, they reported on the June meeting, and I appreciate that. We also welcomed one of our representatives. I'm trying to, he's not my representative. It's Representative Sossaman, who represents District 32, and he's from the Vance and Granville County area. He provided helpful insights on advocating issues concerning the older adults of North Carolina. The main takeaway from that report was given by Jill Silverman Lawrence. She's the newly appointed Deputy Director of the Division of Aging, who reported on the All Ages, All Stages North Carolina Project, which was launched in May of 2023 as a groundbreaking multi-sector plan to transform the infrastructure and coordination of services across multiple state agencies and departments for the aging population. That's a long sentence, sorry. Anyway, since 24% of North Carolinians are aged 60 or over, one quarter of all of the population, it is imperative that services be coordinated to meet this growing need. North Carolina is one of 10 states participating in this multi-sector plan that will help ensure that all Americans have access to coordinated care and support services that enable them to age with health, dignity, and connection. The priorities of the plan for the next two years are affording aging, optimizing health and well-being, strengthening communities for a lifetime through housing, adult protective services, and age-friendly communities, and supporting older adults and their families through home and community-based services and family caregiver support. North Carolina is ninth in the United States in the 65-plus population. A report will be published next month on the All Ages, All Stages North Carolina Plan. It will demonstrate a commitment to building an age-friendly state. This plan will be reviewed annually and then updated with recommendations to the General Assembly for changes. Now, I'd like to ask Sue, who will come before you and report on her service. She attended the March meeting, which I was unable to attend, and because of my age, and I'm now a caregiver for my husband, I'm going to... I'll be stepping down.
It's okay, Kay. Take your time.
Sorry. I've been with you 16 years. Sue, sorry.
No, you're fine, Kay. It's remarkable.
I do want you to know that I will be working with the three senior center, three centers, the senior centers, to find my replacement. Sue is standing in for me. You take over.
Thank you, sweetheart. That was good.
Good morning, Sue.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Sue Kelly. It has been my privilege to be the alternate for Dare County with the Senior Tar Heel Legislature. And it has been my real privilege to work with Kay. She mentioned 16 years, and during those 16 years, she's done just about everything you can do with STEEL. She's been active, president of the Friends of Steel, chairing committees. She's a wonderful writer and speaker, knows how to put these resolutions together. She has served her county very well. I did attend the March 24 meeting, 2024 meeting, and I'm going to be really quick because this is a long and interesting meeting that you're having this morning, and I don't want to take up too much time. Kay mentioned a couple of things. I will add one thing to her statistics about seniors. The largest growing group of seniors is the 85-plus-year-old group, which I think is very interesting. She talked about how our percentage as seniors of the general population is on the increase, but 85%, I mean, 80, 85 years and older is the fastest-growing group within the senior group. I think STEEL has been developing and is still developing more plans for future growth, getting the word out to people, I think, is what they really want to do. A lot of the issues that are raised are necessarily for more disadvantaged North Carolina citizens. But one thing that I think is very real is that none of us knows what we may face as we age and as our family members age. And one of the big issues is caregivers. One of the issues we addressed in March was the number of unpaid, which is still an insufficient number of caregivers within our senior population. The committees that STEEL has include advocacy, elections and candidates, public relations, resolutions, rules and bylaws, and finance. I have more of these brochures there. There's one in the packet that Kay shared with you. I have a bunch more if you think you know anybody who might benefit. It gives an idea. Not enough people yet know about STEEL, but we're making real inroads in that because it's important. We also advocated with the legislature this past year, too. So we are putting the word out and working as hard as we can. The last thing I would like to ask is that you consider funding the alternate. Now, all of the counties in the state pick a delegate and an alternate. And right now, we have 90 of our 100 counties that are represented. And then it is up to the local governing body in each county, that is you all, to determine how you will fund it. So the delegates are generally funded, and in many counties, the alternates are also funded, not in Dare. So I would ask you to consider whether or not Dare County would like to also fund the alternate. It's very often that one or the other of us goes. That's been Kay's and my general routine to the three statewide meetings held in Raleigh. So it probably would not be a big increase in funds if you did decide to pay the costs, which would be hotel room, travel, and food for the alternate as well as the delegate. So lastly, I want to say again, thank you very much for giving me this privilege to serve my county with the Senior Tar Heel Legislature. And thank you for the time and letting us speak today because it's a big agenda, a very interesting agenda. And Kay and I both thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Sue.
Chairman, that brings us to item 10 on the agenda. Dave Peterson's here for a report from Trillium.
Dave, good to see you again.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. So I first want to thank Commissioner Ross and Commissioner Overman for serving on our Regional Advisory Board. I did go to visit Wally last week. You know, thoughts and prayers and every day thinking about them is top of the list. So I want to also thank Commissioner Ross of the advocacy that he's been doing most recently and really appreciate that. So going to go ahead with my annual report to you all. So this is fiscal year 2223. We served 43,571 individuals. And if you think about that number in itself, it's gone down because, I'll talk a little bit about how the standard plan insurance companies have started seeing the mild-to-moderate individuals. But you see about 33,000 for primary diagnosis of mental health, 12,500 for substance use, and about 7,400 for intellectual and developmental disabilities. Total cost of that was about $653 million. So I look back, I've been in front of you all for 10 years now, and in 2018, I mentioned to you that this was going to happen, and it finally did. So in July of 2022, the delay, delay after delay, finally went live with the standard plan, tailored plan model. So it takes a look at the tailored plan model. There was legislation in there this year. There was six of us in the state, and the legislation basically said, we want to get you down to four or five.
What's an LME, Dave?
Local Management Entity. Yep. So, and managed care organization for MCO. What that did was increased our population to about 1.5 million, and I'll show you a map on that. But our go-live date was July 1. And like I said, it's been delayed four times over the past several years. So we are really excited that it went live, but I'll tell you, it was a huge lift. I've been doing this 40 years, never seen a lift like this before.
Guys, I assure you, the complexity that was imposed on these guys was astronomical. So Dave, you and the staff and team at Trillium deserve a great deal of credit. We've had a lot of meetings and discussions on this, and it was a monumental transition task, so thank you. I just wanted to point that out.
Appreciate that, Commissioner. So when the secretary had decided to, in legislation, go to four or five, the secretary decided to go to four. And you'll see on here the dates of when that consolidation plan was due up to the state, the agreement due up to the state, and then the go-live. What's interesting about this, and let me just give you like two numbers, okay? When we went live, we included 900 staff to be added to our payroll, okay? 900 new staff came over from East Point and Sand Hills, okay? 1,200 provider agencies got added to our network. And if you just think about trying to make sure that every single staff person gets paid, okay, 900 employees getting enrolled, and we had 45 days to do that, okay? Yes, Commissioner?
I just want to also point out to everybody, that timeline that's up on the left-hand screen, 12, 18, 23, in the next 12 days following that approval by Secretary Kinsley, was there anything that happened or occurred at the East Point Health Services that were being consolidated into Trillium? As in a massive audit and ongoing now legal issues pursuing those who perpetrated that fraud?
So I'm not at liberty to talk about the legal issues. And so, but there was an audit that did occur on the East Point side. And so with that, you know, our main goal is continue to maintain that services and supports for individuals with mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use continue to get services.
Just approximately $5 million was involved. This wasn't a few lunches that were misappropriated or charged. And again, Dave, we've talked. I'm looking for regular updates from Joy.
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
So with that, because we had three regions as legacy Trillium, and I was over the central region, including Dare County, adding 18 new counties, we are now 46 counties. We have our population of 51,000 tailored plan members. Those are members that receive really high-risk services and supports. 163,000 Medicaid direct members, and 287,000 uninsured members that now fall under our purview. So this is a map of what we have right now in these five regions. You'll see the kind of purple color is the region that I'm over, going from Nash County all the way out to Dare and Hyde County. So those, this evening, I'm presenting down in Hyde County to the county commissioners. So on the road quite a bit. But we want to make sure that you're also seeing that we're trying to keep the local presence. Those dots on there are the offices that we have maintained, okay? There's one that's off there now. Jacksonville is no longer in there, but all the other offices, we have been trying to uphold. So we keep a local presence, just like I'm here with you today. So the tailored plan, I've talked about this for a couple of years now. Not only have we been serving the mental health, substance use, and developmental disability population, but we're now serving the whole person, the physical health side of that individual. So your primary care doctor's office, if they serve Medicaid individuals, we have a contract with them. We have to contract with every single physical health primary care office. Your pharmacy, where you pick up your medications, we have a contract with them. So if you just think about that lift in itself from a contractual standpoint, having thousands of pharmacies that we have had to contract with in this consolidation, okay, and going live as a tailored plan. So at the bottom of this slide, like I've talked about since 2018, those are the five standard plan insurance companies that are now serving the Medicaid low-to-moderate risk individuals, which we've been doing for decades and decades. State decided to move them over to the insurance companies. We still will be managing the very high-risk individuals. Some changes in Medicare, or changes in care management. The state has also asked that we have a plan-based tailored plan and also having a glide path to move some care management out to the provider agencies. So there are providers now that are doing care management that we've been doing. I will say that shift originally, it used to be in the providers in the 90s. It moved over to us, and now it's slowly moving back out into the provider world. Real quickly, one of the big focuses that we're trying to take a look at is our reentry population with the jails. We have a lot of individuals, about 80% of every single person in the jail either has a mental health or substance use issue. And we want to make sure that we have a reentry team that gets those folks linked to the services and supports afterwards. Like I said, we're focusing on whole-person care and population health. We now, since we're over the whole person, we're taking a look at diabetes, not just mental health, and how the mental health can impact diabetes and vice versa, as one example. Here are just some projects, and I won't go through all these, but we are trying to get these, and Dare County does have a couple of these already in the schools. Trying to take a look at the fentanyl issue. We are supplying Narcan kits to all of our counties. We have been doing some value-based purchasing. And what that means is, and taking a look at what the standard plans are doing, to incentivize folks to go to their doctor's appointments, incentivize kids... incentivize folks to go to their doctor's appointments, incentivize kids to do healthy activities after school, doing some incentive programs like that, okay? We have some upcoming projects, knowing the substance use issue is a huge issue across the state, across the country, because of the opioid epidemic. Chess Health is an app where providers are staying linked to their members that they're serving, doing reminders of, did, you know, you go to your AA meeting, whatever the issue is that they're trying to focus on, okay, with that individual. It's an app. We do have back-at-home services where folks are starting to need some assistance with either first-time rent or renovations on the home. That's a, a pocket that we're really trying to focus on. And as you know, you have Oxford houses in Dare County. We're continuing to try to support opening up Oxford houses in some of our newer counties. So specific data to Dare County, total number of individuals served was 711. This number went down from last year because of those members moving over to the tailored plan. Primary diagnosis, 469 with mental health, 222 with substance use, and 121 with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And as I always say, these numbers don't add up to 711 because some of these folks have dual diagnosis. And that's my presentation for this year. Any questions?
Any questions, anyone, Dave? Good info, though.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. I just, again, I want to reaffirm Dave's commitment to all of those counties' members in this group. Dave's been a very steadfast and totally reliable professional resource to us. I know while he would say the same if he were here to do so, so thank you again, Dave.
Thank you for your support, too. Dare County has a hold. Thank you.
Chairman, that brings us to items 11 and 12. Both of these are nuisance actions. We have a couple of properties that, I think there were some pictures in your packet that we need to get cleaned up. Noel and his staff have done all the things that they can do to try to get these folks to...
Can, can we add Danny to this? As a third? No, not as a nuisance item. Sorry, Danny, I withdraw.
Noel and his folks have, have sent letters and done all the things they can do to try to enforce, and we're at a point now where we need to move forward with some type of legal action to get these cleaned up, and I need your authority on both of those to, to do that. I will say that Mr. Bowser, upon hearing we were doing this, has begun to make efforts to get his cleaned up. I still need the authority to move forward if he doesn't proceed as he's told Noel he would, but...
What would that entail, Bobby? Let's assume we approve and move forward.
Basically filing an action and asking the court to force them to do what we haven't been able to do.
And the court then would have real enforcement, not just send another letter?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you, are we handling both of these at the same time?
We can, we can do them individually, or you can do them both at the same time. I just need a motion and...
Well, yeah, I mean, what's the pleasure of the board? You want to handle them individually or both at the same time?
I, I would move both at the same time, I agree.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve authority on both cases for county attorney to move forward.
All right, so motion, motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Prose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. While we, while we, pardon?
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I have a question, you know, we dealt with this a bunch in the county, with a couple of properties, and it seemed like with one of those guys, although we had enforcement from the courts, and we even, as a community, went out and put a dumpster, cleaned it up, and the guy just screwed it up again. There's not so much we can do legally, correct?
Correct. I mean, once we get a court order, then in theory, the person who's there would be in contempt of a court order if they did not bring it up to standard. The question becomes, how aggressive is the court willing to be? There's also a method called an order of abatement, where the court can give us the authority to go in there and clean it up, and when we do that, we can then charge that cost back to the property owner, and that becomes similar to a tax lien on the property. That works in some cases, but in other cases, when there's no value in the property, then all of a sudden, we don't really have any way to do it, but it does get it cleaned up. So there are some alternatives out there if we get that far. Usually, once the court gets involved, we're not trying to take their money, we're not trying to fund them, we're not trying to hurt them. We just want them to clean it up, and we can generally get some movement once we get the court involved.
Right.
Bobby, while we're on this subject, have we had any more conversation with Ms. Michelle Lewis that presented to us in our last meeting about the cemeteries that she was going to provide us with a loss?
I haven't gotten anything back from her yet. I understand that she went out of the country and may not be back, so we're waiting for her to get back.
All right, we'll, we'll keep that on our to-do list.
I would bother him, um, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, yes, I would add that, you know, that's a slippery slope when the county gets in and does things like that. I will bring to the board's attention the Meekins and Baum cemetery over there in Martha's Vineyard, that was, ended up being a private effort. And that way, a lot of the nuances of whether we should be doing this or not are removed.
Article 12 of the North Carolina General Statute determines what county commissioners are and are not responsible for, as far as cemeteries. And it's very detailed of what, of what can be done. And most of the, for one thing, is all public cemeteries are responsible, the county commissioners are responsible for it, and those have to be recorded with registered deeds. There are no, no public cemeteries recorded registered deeds in Dare County. So most of the cemeteries here in Dare County are either private family or privately owned.
So to follow along the lines that Commissioner House is talking about, the statute is, it allows us to fund certain things, but it's like $50 a year, so it really doesn't allow us to do much there. And then there's another provision that says, where there's an abandoned public cemetery, then the, the county can do some things, but it, two, two things have to happen. One, it had to have been a public cemetery where, and that means anybody who wanted to be buried there could be buried there. It can't be a family cemetery. And then the second thing is, it has to have been abandoned by whoever owned it or whatever. And if you don't have those two things, then the county has no really role in dealing with a private cemetery. What we, what I have told them, and what we can do is, where those cemeteries are on our property, and I understand there are some on our property, then we could go in and clean up and do some things to try to help there, and we maybe help with, you know, some public outreach and things like that to try to help. So I've reached out and told them, we'll do the things we can do to help, and they're supposed to get back to me and talk about, you know, where they are and which cemeteries they're talking about and those kinds of things.
And that's what I was specifically talking about.
So we'll keep trying. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. That brings us to item 13 on our agenda. It's entitled Maintenance Funding Sources. Through the, I guess, the last five years with COVID, with our staff shortages, with all the things that have been going on, the maintenance on some of our stuff has, has gotten behind and needs to be taken care of. I asked Dustin and Shanna to go through all the buildings in our, in the county that we maintain, and bring me back some kind of a report that tells me what they need done. And I, and I meant everything from painting a wall and caulking a window to whatever they saw as they inspected those buildings. And I was not looking for facility improvements. I wasn't looking for, we need another wing, or we need to build this or build that. I, I wanted to know what it was we had out there that needed to be taken care of, and, you know, some kind of cost estimate on what it would cost us to do that. And so over the last, I don't know, six to nine months, they've been working on that, and we got the report back from them. And it is a very good report, it has a couple of things on there that kind of went beyond the scope of the report. The net effect is, we have a number of things, most all of them are small, just caulking, painting, flooring, bathrooms, fixtures, just things like that over time in, in old buildings that need to be taken care of. The net cost of all that was about 1.9 million, but about 800 or 900,000 was two things that really weren't to be a part of the report. One was to add some office space at the pheasant center there, on top of each other down there. They've got more people than they've got offices. And the other was to, rather than try to put lipstick on a pig at the restrooms at Wreck Park, to replace those outdoor restrooms. And so between the two of those, they made up about 800 or 900,000 of that 2.9 million. And so what we were doing was, now that we're sort of caught back up in, in our maintenance department, we've got staff, we've got our new director in place, all those things are there, is to start trying to tackle those things, but to do that is going to take a while if we try to do it all in staff and some of the things we can't do with staff. And so what I'm asking is to allow us to fund doing all of those things that are on that list, and to do them as immediately, as quickly as we can get those done, so that with our new maintenance director, and, and as we go forward, we're caught up. In our interview process, we impressed on all of our candidates the need for a long-term maintenance plan similar to this. The candidate that we chose, Dave Stucke, he was an internal candidate, has done exactly that for a large corporation in a factory where he had everything down to the belts in the fans that ran the air conditioning unit and when they needed to be replaced. And so he got it. And so one of his charges in his new role as the facilities maintenance director is to get that plan, get it in place, and implement it so that we don't get behind and that we take care of the things that we got. And so we want to bring it current for him so that he can start with a clean slate. So we look for sources of funds, and what we have as a source of funds is, we have $13 million sitting in that account that we had for the housing projects that we are now doing. And a million of that is earmarked for the teacher housing, and so now that leaves 12 million in that fund. And I'm asking you for authorization to use up to 2 million of that fund to fund these things. The two big-ticket items, the bathrooms and the pheasant center, we would make them the last priority on the list because they're new add-ons. We would do all the maintenance stuff first if we had funds available left over, then we would provide for that. If we didn't have the funds, I've talked to Dave about incorporating those into some of the capital things that we're doing in other places, and either way, we would get them done. But what I'd like to do is take up to 2 million out of that fund, charge the new facilities director with getting these things done. We'll do the things we can do in-house, and we'll contract out the things that we can't do in-house, and we'll get all of it done and get our maintenance up to speed once and for all, so that we can keep it that way going forward.
Any questions, Bob?
Move to approve, sir.
Okay, it's motion on the floor by Commissioner Council to approve.
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Bassnight. Any further discussion?
I just want to say, you're smart to, to keep up with all of the, the maintenance issues now. Don't let them go, it'll be more expensive in years to come. We don't do them now.
Dave needs to chime in. Would you amend that and also authorize him to do a budget amendment in that housing fund and then a capital project ordinance for that amount?
I agree to the amendment.
Okay, second to the motion, agree to amendment?
I agree.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Prose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That brings us to the Parks and Wreck Needs Assessment RFQ. You have copies of the, we, we had talked several times about sending out an RFQ to find out what the community wants in terms of recreation needs, so that we could then prioritize our funds rather than sort of reacting to the loudest voice as we add recreation facilities. And so this is a study that we've asked, we got an RFQ from various firms to talk about, come in and do this assessment for us. What you have in your packet are the RFQs that we received. You have, I think I sent you all, Dustin and his staff and our staff reviewed those. They made some recommendations to you. I think they chose the McGill and Associates was their number one choice, an outfit called Design Workshop was their number two choice, and then another firm called Withers and Ravenel was their third choice. And so what we're here to do is ask you all to select one of those. Again, you have the pros and the cons in front of you. You can take the staff recommendation, or if you disagree, you can choose someone else. But either way, we'd like for you to, to pick one of these for us to contact, enter into, authorize us to enter a contract, and get them moving on that assessment as quickly as we can. And Dustin's here, if you have questions, he can probably answer them in better detail than I.
All right, I'll open it up for the board for any comments. I know I've reviewed each one of them, Skylar gave me the hard copy.
Yeah, me, me too. I was, I was impressed sort of as well with Withers Ravenel. I was wondering, Dustin, if you could give a little clarification, again, not huge detail, but why they were not necessarily selected over, I don't know either one of these, other than what I've read here in the packet.
Absolutely. Based on the proposal that Withers Ravenel had presented to us, and that's kind of what we have to go off up to make these recommendations, a lot of their experience, and really truly the majority of their experience with Dare County and eastern North Carolina, had a lot to do with stormwater management versus specific Parks and Wrecks Needs Assessment. And then the RCCP, which, you know, they've, they've helped us with in the past, was also a large portion of their overall experience. That was the biggest reason for me of, of putting them where I did compared to the other two, and that's just sheerly based on their involvement with Parks and Wreck Needs Assessment specifically.
I like, I like the fact, too, that McGill was going to hold actual public meetings in various locations, and Withers was doing this virtually, and I, I'm not sure how much input you might get from a virtual meeting. I just feel like you get better presence when you have a...
Yeah, I would agree with that for sure, Bob, yeah.
I think the other thing is that Withers and Ravenels were dedicating fewer resources to their...
I kind of gathered that through the presentations as well.
They've got great people, but I, I agree with the assessment. I think our guys are comfortable with McGill, and that's the recommendation I'm, I'm supportive.
But I will say that I don't think you'd go wrong with any of the top three, so...
Oh, no. I agree.
I would tend to think that, too.
Well, we had two out, we had two out of state, and I prefer dealing with in-state, in-state firms. Do you have a recommendation? Danny, did you have a recommendation for, as a motion?
Yeah, I'm happy to make that motion, that we authorize staff to go ahead and work things out with, to bring McGill on board and do this.
Is that second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Further discussion? All right, hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Prose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dustin.
Rough, rough timeline, Dustin? Just back of the envelope?
Sure. A study like this typically takes about five to six months from the time that we sign a contract, today engage with the public, and consolidate their information, and give us some sort of tangible recommendation based on, on what our expectations are.
Okay, so we should be ready to go first of the new year, roughly?
That's my, that's my understanding, yes, sir.
We have this in place so that at budget time, we have it and we can make decisions based on what we have.
Yeah, okay, great. Thanks, guys.
Nice job, Doc, guys.
Thank you, Doug.
Item 15 on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is a capital project ordinance for architectural contract for the Dare County Public Works Project. Dave?
You included the Public Works Project in your approved capital improvements plan, and the next agenda item is the architectural contract for it, but this budget, you have to vote on the budget for it first. So if you've got any questions about that or the contract, Dustin's here, and Bobby and I are here, but it's an amendment with Oakley Collier, with our master contract at the same agreed-upon fee that we've done all of our other projects. I don't think there's any other differences.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, pleasure of the board, much improved. Motion on the floor by... Okay. Pleasure, boys. Most to approve. Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion?
Looks good. Good-looking, good-looking plan.
Yeah. Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And that would bring us to item 16. That's the Public Works Buxton Transfer Station Construction and Design Contract. Dustin?
As David had just mentioned, you all just approved the capital project ordinance for this contract. And then so this item in front of you is the actual design service contract submitted by Oakley Collier, allowing them to move forward with the design and programming of the Buxton Transfer Station as well as the Manu Public Works Project.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Much to approve.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bassnight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin.
Item 17 is the five-year general fund projection. And Dave, how's that?
Every year now since we've gotten our AA+ rating, one of the boxes to check to get and to maintain that is to do a general fund projection for the next five years. And the purpose of it is just to know, to make an estimate that if you've got a budgetary imbalance, if you've got something going haywire as far as the balance between expenditures and revenues, this year was, it was different to, we use a tool in Excel that says if you take the high projection and the low projection, it'll get you a 95% confidence that you're going to end up in, within that high and low. Well, with what happened with recessionary years going back into 12 through, even through 14 and 15, then growth before COVID, then the decrease in COVID, then huge increases after that, and then kind of a back to return to normal, that high bar and that low bar went, they diverged a lot. So there's a huge difference between the high projection and the low projection. But the median is, is probably right on. And the takeaways to get from that is the page following the summary, which I think it's PDF page 64, the gray bar is fund balance. And that shows you that it should be pretty stable over the next five years. There's a slight decrease, but, but nothing significant. Then with the amount of debt we've got coming on and the beach nourishment debt that we're going to be incurring in '26 and '27, two pages back from that, a very important measure is how much your debt service as a percentage does it make up of your total budget? Because you can't change that debt service if something goes bad. So they look for generally below 15%. We've been as high as 20 or 21% before. But if you plan for it, they're okay with it as long as you show you that you get back. But in that median projection, you're below that every year except that first year when those big pieces of debt service roll in, which would be fiscal '26. So if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
In the '26, '07, '08 years, I'm looking at that chart, Dave, and we're 15.8, 14.6, 14.8 percentage of consolidated general fund and debt service. Previously, we had sort of a baseline low-growth, high-growth projection for each year, which is, again, standard practice. Worst case, if it were low growth, as you said, once we have the debt service, we've got it.
Right.
I'm wondering if you guys took a look at what that percent might go up to if we were to experience low growth.
Actually, on that chart, the, the projected debt service is the scale on the left.
Okay.
And then each one, so you can see it's exactly what you said, the worst-case scenario is low growth.
It's still under 20%, even with low growth.
Right. It would peak at about 19.
Okay. All right. Now that makes me feel a little better. Okay. Thank you. I missed that in the chart.
All right. Anyone else? Well, thank you, Dave. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
So that brings us to our consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of amendments from July 16th, Spectrum Cable TV Contract, the 2024 update to the CRS program for public information, the Great Tales, Great Trails State Program Application, a budget amendment from Soil and Water Strap Funding, a budget amendment for the Registered Deeds Grant, a budget amendment for dredge loan forgiveness, a budget amendment for Salvo RCCP Grant, a budget amendment for the Hatteras Village RCCP Grant, a budget amendment for the CSDM Grant for the Four Towns Beach Nourishment, a budget amendment for the CSDM Grant for the Southern Hatteras Sand Search, a resolution and budget amendment for the Rodanthie Emergency Ferry Channel Grant Application, health budget amendment, Public Health and Services Grant Year Two, and DHHS Social Services Northwoods Consulting Partner Software as a Service Agreement. And it's a three-year agreement.
Much to approve.
Okay. Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second?
The second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That brings you to your board appointments. Your first board appointment is for the ABC Board. Ed Sharon Jr. and Don Twine Jr. both have terms expiring this month and the ABC Board recommends their reappointment.
Motion to approve Ed Sharon and Don Twine Jr.
Again, a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bassnight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Pheasant Center Advisory Board. The Pheasant Center Advisory Board recommends Karen Scroggins be appointed to fill a vacancy.
Move to point Scroggins, please.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch to approve Karen Scroggins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Number three is the Game and Wildlife Commission. Dr. Horn's term expired in July of '24. Due to a miscommunication by the Wildlife Commission, they told us he wasn't interested in being reappointed. Now they're telling us he did wish to be reappointed and the commission has asked that he be reappointed.
Pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve Andrew Horn's reappointment.
Okay. Is a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Virginia's Tilt Community Center Advisory Board. Mary Lou Harris, Mary Pendle, Flossy Tugwell, and Tiffany Westcott all have terms expiring this month and the Virginia Tilt Community Center Advisory Board Nominated Committee recommends their reappointment.
So moved.
Okay. It's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bassnight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Recoming board appointments in September. You have the Albemarle Region Resource Conservation Development Council with one term. You have the Health and Human Services Board with four terms expiring. In October, you have the Library Board, the Dare Library Board with one term expiring. And in November, you have the Rodanthie Wave Salvo Community Center Board with two terms expiring. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, County Manager. I appreciate that. That brings us to item 20, Commissioners Business and Managers Business. Do you have anything else for us today, Bob?
Yes, sir. I have several things. Let's see. First of all, we had talked about our Recovery Court and the Recovery Court physicians at some meeting a while back. And we have two physicians there that are available. As you all know, those physicians report to the resident Superior Court Judge and they're administered through the state administrative offices of the court. We fund those by way of a contract with the state where we send the state the salary dollars and they then pay the employees, the state employees, to manage and run the Recovery Court. We do that with a contract. We got the contract back and it had provisions in it that said that we were gonna, that we would be responsible not only for paying for the salaries, which was fine. We agreed to do that and have money budgeted for that, but also to cover their workers' compensation, disability, and those kinds of costs that may be incurred by the state. That's a broad expense because I'll just take a workers' comp claim. Somebody could go out on workers' comp for, for years and, or they would do a clincher where they settle it and it would be a huge amount of money. And we would have to go out of pocket to, to pay that.
Disability as well.
Disability as well. The disability is even more problematic because if you are disabled, then you immediately vest and you get 30 years retirement even though you've only been working for 10. And so you get treated as if you had 30 years of service and now you've got to pay the retirement benefit over time. And so that liability potentially was a, a lot for us. I contacted AOC and had several conversations with their staff about that. They essentially told me that wasn't negotiable. I told them, well, we couldn't live with that. He came back to me. He said, look, he said, I don't think the risk is as big as you think it is. He said that we have a provision in the contract that we enter with the people that we hire that says whatever benefit they have only lasts while they're under contract. So that if, and the contracts are one-year contracts. So at most, we would have a one-year risk because once their contract expired, whatever benefits out there would go away. I asked him to put that in writing and send that to me so that I could share it with you all and see whether that was a risk we're willing to take or not.
That would basically indemnify us with a cap.
With a cap. I haven't gotten that in writing yet.
That, that would be more palatable, I think, guys, than an open-ended.
Agree.
Yeah, but you could have that one issue in that year.
Well.
Especially with work comp. I know. I've been there, done that, sold it, dealt with it. That, that could be huge.
And so I, I talked with our staff about couldn't we get them covered under our policy? And the answer is no. They, they aren't our employee, your worker comp's premiums based off your salaries and your wages. And since we don't have them in the wage scale, they're not part of our coverage.
Would what, would what you, what Bob just said be true that even with the one-year sort of cap, we could still be exposed to a massive number?
If they had a clincher agreement that occurred in that one, a clincher agreement's when, rather than pay out the next X number of years at workers' comp, they say, we'll give you this to settle the thing. If they did that, that could be a big number.
Would they, would they be willing, do you think, to give us a cap?
Well.
You're indemnified up to a max of X.
What I suggested is that they put them on their insurance and we would pay their premium. If, so if their premium went up by virtue of adding these two employees.
Why wouldn't we do that?
We would cover that premium. He's coming back to me. So.
That seems like the right way to go.
So we'll see what happens. I, I just.
Got to get out of there.
Yeah, yeah. I agree, Bob. We're not doing that.
I just shared that with you because it's something that's been out there. I know that Commissioner Bateman and I have talked about it a number of times and we're just trying to get it resolved so we can keep that going because it's been a good thing. The second thing is I talked to you all a little while, I think it was at the last meeting, about a grant we were trying to do to help build some bathrooms for the park service and trying to get some indemnities and trying to cover us for future liability. Where we are with that right today, and I need guidance from you all, is the park service doesn't have the authority to give us indemnities. Dave Howitt can't contract on behalf of the United States of America to say the government's going to pay us if there's a lawsuit. He doesn't have those authorities. And so we can't get the indemnities from the park service. The, the forever group that's sponsoring this agreed to give us the indemnities out of their funds and their.
Forever OBX or something?
Yeah.
OBX Forever.
OBX Forever. That's fine and that's good. And as long as they're available and, and having resources that they can indemnify us with, then we're fine. But if the day ever came where they were defunct or whatever in 10 years or 15 years and they didn't have anything, then we don't have those. Our, our real risk of liability is you get a grant for some amount of money and then if something happens and the, the Barton, how much is the grant for Barton?
$114,000.
So, so our, if something happened and the park service shut it down, tore it down, decided not to have a bathroom, the granting authority may ask for us to reimburse at least the prorata amount of that grant. So right now, if it was on day one, our risk would be $114,000. That would go down over time. So again, I think we could make this happen. That would be our outside risk. That risk gets smaller every year as we amortize. It's a 25-year grant. And so theoretically, we would have some liability for 25 years that they'd be indemnifying us for. The question is, are y'all prepared to take that risk? If you are, then, then we're fine. We'd be for it. We've already submitted the grant with that as a proposed agreement, but it's not final until you all approve it and until the grant is, is granted, if we get the grant, and then you all approve that as well. So if you don't like that, we still have time to, to stop it. But we had a deadline. We had to meet to get the grant in. So we, so this is what we're proposing. But it's not final till the board understands it and decides whether they're willing to accept that or not. So that's where we are. Are you all prepared to sort of take whatever amount of risk there is on that $114,000? Or do we stop?
I would say it's a pretty impressive project. When they're done with that project down there, that it's going to be quite a draw for years to come.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you, Danny. I'm okay with it, Bobby.
Okay. So then I need a motion to authorize me to move forward.
Motion to authorize County Manager to move forward.
All right. It's a motion by Commissioner Ross to authorize the county manager to move forward. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
In the consent agenda, you all authorized some funding for the Hatteras Emergency Ferry. You may have read about or heard about it. We talked about it. But the Corps and the Ferry Division, for whatever reason, did not do the maintenance that allowed the Rodanthie side of the emergency ferry channel to open. And.
Imagine that.
And then it turned out that their strategy was, well, you know, if something happened and we had an emergency, they could get an emergency declaration and then they'd go in there and do it. Then we were uncomfortable with that. I was uncomfortable with that. Drew was uncomfortable with that. And so we went out and, and said, what does it take for us to get our permit for us to get that done? After doing some digging and Barton doing some work, we found that it's a, there's a nationwide permit out there that if you're doing under a certain number of cubic yards, you don't have to go through all the rigmarole you have to go through to get a permit. The number of cubic yards we have is under that amount. And so it appears we can get in a relatively short order a nationwide permit that would let us get in there and go ahead and get that out right here in the beginning of hurricane season. So we're not waiting on something to happen or waiting for an emergency thing like that. It's going to be at our cost. I think we can share that with the shallow draft funds that we pay about 25% of the cost of that. You all just approved the funds for a minute ago. But, but that's the direction we're, we're moving in. We're just doing that on our own. We hate to do that because now that we've done it, from now on, it's going to be our responsibility. I mean, that's just how it'll default to us when really it's a, it's a federal channel and it's a state ferry route. So we shouldn't really even be involved. But nonetheless, we are. And so we'll get that done as quickly as we can get the permits and get that done and taken care of.
Not the first time we haven't had to step up to the plate.
Right. So anyway, so we're, we're working through, through that and we'll, we'll get that done. Just one other thing, because we didn't know what that was going to entail and we were concerned about, again, the season coming up and we didn't have any idea how quickly they could get their emergency permits, which was their strategy. I had Drew go out and I, we had met with some folks from down in the Fort Myers area after the storms they had down there last year. And they lost all their bridges and all that sort of thing. And they had contracted out with some companies that had these shallow draft barges and shallow draft tugs that could. draft barges and shallow draft tugs and they could drive it right up on the beach and you could unload trucks, gas, whatever you wanted. And so we've got some feelers out with them to look with them to try to get that in place as well. So if we had a storm, we're not left hanging. We could, we could get the recovery stuff there, we could get things back up to speed, and we could do the things we needed to do to recover while DOT is getting the road back in place so that we could pass to get, you know, to the island. So we're going in two directions. And while we're doing those two things, the Corps and the state are still working to try to maybe get their permits earlier or whatever too, but again, we just didn't want to leave any stones unturned, so we want to let everybody know that we've got a plan if anything was to happen. We can make it work down there, so. That's where we are at that. And then the last thing I have is Brian, Brian, is he still here yet? We had some, I had some conversations last week. I spoke with the Southern Environmental Law Center and they had been in touch with Congressman Rousers Committee. He's got a subcommittee that he's in charge of that has oversight over the Corps and the folks that do that work, and they're working to try to help us as well. As y'all recall, we did a letter, I don't know, several meetings ago, that went out to all of them. The Southern Environmental Law Center has been following up on that letter, has been in contact with us off and on about where they're going, who they're meeting with, with all that. And then I followed up also on Friday with Congressman Murphy's staff, or I guess on Thursday. He was going to be in the area, I believe, on Friday.
Friday morning, he was.
Yeah, Fri, he went to go down there and look at it Friday morning, and we talked about that, talked about what, again, reiterated the problems. They had already been aware, we had talked with his office before about that and sent him the things. He's going to, he's been down there to look at it personally. And then we also asked them to get in contact with Congressman Rousers' office and his committee to sort of make sure that he understood that he had the support from the congressman that represented our area as well and to sort of keep the pressure building to try to get some of the things done that Brian talked about this morning. So again, a lot of things are going on all the time about this. I know we talk to the Park Service, I talk to them at least twice a week about this and other things. And so a lot of things going on, but I wanted to share that with you and for the people down in Bucks and let them know that you and we are on it all the time trying to make things happen down there. That would be it, except that I need a closed session at the appropriate time.
Got you. Thank you, County Manager. Dorothy, our Public Information Officer, you have anything for us?
Yes, sir. Much, yes.
Okay. Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, you have anything else for us?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, that brings us to Commissioner Business and Commissioner Bassnight, will you kick that off?
I'll be glad to, Chairman Woodard. I want to echo your comments about the Lost Colony and the five-thousandth performance last week. It's a spectacular show. If you have not seen it, please just try to see it before it ends for the season. It's just, when I served on the Reha Board, we were working towards moving it to twenty-twenty-one, you know, twenty-first century look to entertain the families that are now so into lots of different devices and social media and so forth, and it is just spectacular. It's amazing to see the projections. Get a little seasick when you watch the boat because of all the projection of the water with the boat, so I encourage people to see it before it ends for the season. I certainly, I'm looking forward to the beginning, Dustin, of the recreation study. Thank you for your help. I'm sorry I interrupted your vacation when I called you, but I wanted some more information. But I'm really looking forward to that and hoping we can move forward quickly on that. I also know, this is our last meeting before school starts, our teachers and our students will be going back to school soon. I think the first day for students is August twenty-sixth, and I just hope they have a very successful year. I know we have the finest teachers and educators and students in all of North Carolina, all of the whole country probably, and I wish them all success this year. And of course, I have continued prayers for Wally. Hope he continues to improve and comes home soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, sir. The handout you all found at your desks, at your seats, rather, in Early College, the Town Hall, that's really informational. We were all at the presentation from Superintendent Bassnight, and when he went through the distinction between dual enrollment and early college, I thought it was particularly meaningful and substantive because, speaking for myself, folks would ask me, well, what's the difference, Rob? What's the difference? I struggled a bit for an answer, and if you got to the last page of this, what do they do that dual enrollment doesn't? I think the most important fact that emerges is the enormous amount of interaction, support, contact, and personal guidance that students will receive under early college that dual enrollment did not provide, and the statistics of success are unmistakable and irrefutable. So I just thought I would make sure we all got that. Steve was very nice to send that to us, and I find it to be a helpful document. Mr. Chairman, on the thirty-first, we were privileged to attend the reception for the East Carolina University trustees at the Coastal Studies Institute, and Chancellor Philip Rogers was there and a large group gathered, and I just thought it reinforced and defined the benefit that the CSI facility, its staff, Dr. Reed Corbett, and the work done on coastal resiliency and coastal studies is providing for Dare County, and I just thought it was a terrific event, so I wanted to call that out and congratulate them. I spoke earlier and we heard Lee Goldman speak at Public Comment. I'm going to be following up with him. He is a very, very good guy and an aggressive advocate for Toys for Tots, and they're looking for space for some storage as we approach the year, and he and I agreed to meet and look at possible options that we could find, just that we could store the toys and set up the process because they do such fantastic work. I'm just thrilled with those guys and I wanted to give a shout out to Lee for the good work that he does. I don't know, and again, this is just a question for the county manager, do we have any short update or status regarding the potential for the pickleball program and the cooperative piece with Tourism Bureau? I just-
There's a Tourism Board meeting this week, I think.
Right.
Right? And that will be an item on their agenda, hopefully for their approval to move forward.
Okay. I'm just curious about that. And reemphasize what, again, Lee Goldman pointed out on nine eleven, eight forty-six AM, the walk with the, with the support for those of us that might get a little winded. I think that's terrific, and again, he's kind of not an advocacy group, he's not a LLC, he's just a guy, so I plan to be there. And finally, you heard the update report from Dave Peterson on Trillium. We have really exploded the size for Trillium in its coverage, and I am just really worked up over what happened after that December twenty-third, or not thirteenth announcement, rather, December thirteenth, I believe it was, on his timeline, when the management and legal firm at East Point perpetrated what I consider to be an unconscionable act of self-enrichment. And that is, there are lawsuits filed, the state AG is involved, I believe, and the amount was combined from the CEO, the chief operating officer, I believe, and the law firm, close to five million dollars. It was, and again, I'm talking out loud, maybe Dave doesn't want to speak about it, but I thought it was disgraceful, and the audit revealed just horrible acts by these people. And I will continue to keep you all up to date on the progress there, and I said I wanted updates from Joy. I was referring to the Trillium CEO, Joy Futrell, who is completely uninvolved in this. She is simply supervising the new consolidated entity, and I will look for her leadership in pursuing this to the full extent of the law. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On July twenty-sixth, EJE Dredging Services released the information from fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. As you know, Ms. Katie was purchased under a forgivable loan with the consensus that it would, its billing would be repaid in savings to the county and to the state pursuant to the dredge work plan agreement. EJE Dredging Services has billed Dare County at a minimum of one dollar and fifty cent less than the applicable rates utilizing Ms. Katie dredge vessel. Ms. Katie dredged seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and nineteen cubic yards of material out of the channel and connected channels at Oregon Inlet and forty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-five cubic yards of material out of connected channel and Hatteras inlet. The total cost savings between the two usual and customary rates for dredging services of this type and the lower rate charged by EJE for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four was four thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars. I mean, I'm sorry.
Four million.
Four million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Four thousand.
Three hundred and forty-eight. So that's, that's a huge savings again for us and for the state, and great work from Ms. Katie. I can say that just the other day, another fully loaded trawler came in through the inlet and went into Wan Cheese Harbor and unloaded. So if it was more, if we could keep, keep that going, we'll actually increase our economic drivers for Dare County. The North County Division of Marine Fisheries has just released a twenty-twenty-three Fisheries Management Plan Review. I've had a brief, brief time to go over the highlights of some of it, and I've already found two discrepancies without even really digging into it. On August first, NCDMF, some of their sanctuary laws went into effect, the bounder, all oyster sanctuary boundary change in several places in the sound, but one of the ones that mainly pertains to us is the oyster sanctuary around P Island. It did expand just a tad bit. And I do reflect on the Lost Colony and the five-thousandth performance. It's absolutely excellent, the new sound system, the projections, and if you haven't been there in a while, the new seating, it's just a great experience all the way around. And I highly recommend going and seeing it. If you've seen it before, go see it again. It's changed dramatically and it's just phenomenal. Also, as you know, I'm on the Jeanette's Peer Advisory Council. We do have one more seat available that Dare County can fill, so if we can get our minds together and kind of get, talk to some other people who would like to sit on that council, we meet quarterly and it's usually a morning meeting, and it would be a good experience if we could just get this. We advise Jeanette's Peer on programs and how things are running there, and they advise us on what projects they're doing and just-
I had a very- I had a very nice visit with Mike Remigie the night of the ECU reception of the trustees. He and his wife were there and we chatted and visited, and I found it fascinating, and that's what just piqued my interest here in what you all do. Yeah, Mike's a very good guy.
Yes, very, very, very good, very good advisory group that we have there. Our day in history, I'm not going to go too far back in history, and I do believe we have somebody else on this commission that would be particularly interested in this. Two thousand and two, not a long time in history, but it is our history. The gun turret of the USS Monitor was raised and out of the water. Commissioner House, I'm sure you're familiar with that date and why you were there.
Yes, it was fascinating. Thank you for your comments, and that's important.
Yes. Also, my prayers, my good vibes, I can't say enough. Wally Overman, don't scare us like that again. Come home, get back up here. Let's keep, let's keep getting some work done. Wally, we miss you and my prayers are with you. And now for our favorite part of any commissioner meeting, Fed of the Week.
Our pets of the week this week are Pen A, Ravioli, and Rigatoni. These three babies were just surrendered into daycare. They are about four months old and four years old now. They love toys and are learning to walk on a leash. They love other animals and are ready to run and play in their forever home. To adopt Pen A, Ravioli, or Rigatoni, or foster one of our other animals, come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Mania.
They're pretty dumb.
For more information, visit our website at obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
So please go out to the OBX SPCA and start your own pasta family and give your pasta dogs a forever home. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Commissioner Bateman?
I met the pasta dogs at the dog park. They are a hoot. They're wide open, trust me. Bobby, have we heard anything about the Wan Cheese Boat Ramp?
I have not heard more from what we talked about last week, and I reached out once. I haven't heard back.
I will tell you that they're using it.
Good.
It's just not marked off or roped off or whatever, and there's, and there's a lot of, because it's basically just dirt where they just plowed over what they were digging up, and so there's now becoming, you know, little trenches and so forth because after it rains, but it's definitely getting used whether we designate it as a boat ramp or not. So if we could find out what goes on there and kind of-
I'll keep trying.
The vision hopefully would be we could maybe stabilize the turf and have some marked off areas to say they have a place to park their boats. Nine-one-one on, I'm going to be there for the walk. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Bateman. Commissioner House?
Yes, good morning, everyone. Want to give a shout out to Dr. Beth Rooks, president of, or president, principal of the Cape Hatteras Secondary School of Coastal Studies. That was a long, arduous journey because she's got her hands full, but she wrapped up her PhD at Vanderbilt University and could not be more proud of her. I'm sure our Board of Education realizes they got a racehorse down there. She's got a very good staff, very good morale in that school, and she was presented with a bouquet of flowers and was well-received. Her husband's very grateful for the community support. She's got two gorgeous daughters there, they're involved in the theater program down there, so congratulations to Dr. Rooks. The, talking about the Scarborough Cemetery over there on Driftwood, that, there is an individual of historical significance in there, a guy named Mark Scarborough, and I say that because, you know, people, you know, ask, well, whatever happened to your Hatteras Indians, whatever happened to your Roanoke Indians, and they've been hiding in plain sight, and that gentleman was one of them. He ran a Yopon Works in what is now the area around, what is now the go-kart tracks there. When you're heading to Hatteras and you look over on the ocean side, you've got all that growth in there. I mean, it's got industrial strength, poison ivy in there, some of the biggest cottonmouths you've ever seen. I know Irvin, like I said, talked about tougher than a kiddy hawk cottonmouth, but we got, we got some bad ones down there too, but it's very deceiving. At one time, you could see all the way from the sound all the way to the big ridge that runs to the oceanfront there, and that gentleman is significant, so I'm hoping that we can get some traction on that, and if it takes a community effort, a public effort to do so, I think that's a good, that's an honorable thing to pursue. Steve, thank you for bringing up the monitor turret down there. This was back in the eighties. The superintendent of the park at that time was a guy named Tom Harmon, good guy, came and encouraged Hatteras Village to go after the monitor artifacts because where the monitor sank, you can actually see the spars of the graveyard, landing museum, and a flagpole there with the ferry docks. You can see it from there, but we lost, but fortunately Floyd Lupton, who was the aide to-
it from there. But we lost. But fortunately, Floyd Lupton, who was the aide to Walter Jones, had the foresight. The reason we lost it was because North Carolina did not have a facility to house those artifacts. I mean, here we are with 320 miles of coastline, but yet we were not a player. Maine got more attention than us. New York, of course. They ended up going to the Mariners Museum in Virginia. But he was smart and he was very foresightful to put, however, guys, if North Carolina ever does get a facility, then putting in the legislation that we can have artifacts down there. Well, we do have that facility. So, Floyd, where we are. Thank you. Last but not least, Congressman Murphy, he got a tour of the museum, Graveyard Landing Museum down there last week. He and his wife Wendy were in town. He really had a lot going on. And fortunately, being diplomatic here, the speed limits are 35 miles an hour in the villages, but you just don't pop down the Hatteras or pop up over the bridge anymore. And he really, he had 10 minutes everywhere he went. But he was knocked out by the, by the museum there. There's, they've been experiencing about 1,000 people a day in there.
Wow.
The Friends Group has been putting in some serious money. It was a little bit contentious because we wanted to be open on weekends. The state does not allow that with their three maritime museums. But I tell you what, they've been so busy in there, it's a non-issue. We're doing it Monday through Friday. And last but not least, Janet Gaskin's a lady that helped raise so many kids in town. She was such a good woman, and she passed. She was about 90, but it was just as good as it gets. And I thought with Bee bringing up Dorita Balance there, or, and Bob, you as well, what a great lady she is. There's a lot of great ladies of the Outer Banks, and the clock's ticking on a lot of them. But I just, you know, thank you all for all these great ladies of the Outer Banks and a great gentleman as well for all you've done for us because the heritage matters. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner House. Need a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Mr. Chairman, let me-
Yeah.
I need a motion pursuant to NCGS 14331811A5 to instruct the county staff for negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by on behalf of the county in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract, a proposed contract for the acquisition of real property in the matters of the shiftman property and the Dare concrete property in Rodanthe.
Okay. So, is there a motion to, motion?
Motion by Commissioner House, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. The Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order and turn it over to the county manager.
Yes, sir. In the closed session, the board approved the minutes of the last closed session and gave the county attorney information on the negotiating price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the shiftman property or the Dare concrete property. He took no other action.
Okay. Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to the end of our meeting. I need a motion to adjourn until 9 a.m. on September the 3rd.
So, move.
It's a motion by Commissioner Bateman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.